Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the City Griffin Board of Commissioners, February 11, 2025. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Roddy McCord, followed with invocation by Commissioner Truman Tinsley III. Please join us.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we're here today to ask you your blessings and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just to the best interests of everyone. Help us overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you. We have the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Commissioner Wright with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Curtis. All in favor of the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. Is Miss Ward on?
No.
Okay.
She was going to call me about 1:00.
Okay. So five, zero for the approval of the agenda. Under Presentations and Delegations, item one is to recognize Bain Mallory Golf Course Superintendent Extraordinaire as the January 2025 Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient. Marissa Eller, Public Works Director, will present. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
How are y'all today?
I'm good, thank you. I am so thrilled that I have the honor to present the Strongest Link in the Chain for January to Bain. Bain is one of the hardest working people I know, whether it is during the week or on the weekends. He is at the course, making sure it is prepared and ready to go. I'm not going to read the whole nomination form, as there's a lot in there, but there are a few things that I would like to point out. So to give some perspective on what has been accomplished under his leadership, in 2019, we had a total of 12,034 golf rounds for the calendar year, along with total revenue of $264,513. Since then, we have reached an all-time high at the golf course last year with 28,330 rounds played in 2024 and a total of $853,174.03 in revenue. This is all since Bain has started. Under his leadership and guidance, have we been able to accomplish all of this. I would like to end with this last statement in here. Part of the city's mission statement is to enhance the quality of life by providing a high level of service in an efficient and responsive manner for all citizens, as Bain truly embodies this level of service and commitment in everything he does. He is one of the most hardworking and dedicated employees I know, and it is a true pleasure to be able to work with him and watch as he continues to grow and shape our golf course. So Bain, I would like to say thank you for everything that you do, your dedication to not only the city as a whole, but our citizens and the level of service you provide.
Bain, if you'll turn towards Ms. Susan. If y'all want to. Going that way? Okay. Ms. Eller, if you could join her.
Yeah, I'll wait and see. Okay. Normally, I get to present this to an employee on Friday to let them know that they get to come tonight, but I didn't get to make it, but I felt like we would be a tryout for the back of the business board.
And Bain, would you like to say anything and introduce your family? I believe they're here with you.
Colton and Bryson Mallory and Brandy are here with me today. I want to really thank all of you, the commissioners, the members, for helping me through and helping me help to get the golf course in the best it can be for our citizens, guests, and members. And Brandy, if it wasn't for you, I'd probably still be an assistant somewhere. She really pushed me to be a superintendent, knowing what I know. Yeah, I wouldn't be here for her.
Awesome. Great job. And we also want to give a shout out. Coming up on March 1st is a Superintendent Challenge, three-man scramble, fun of obstacles on the golf course. So that's one of Bain's favorite. Last year was amazing, so I look forward to that on March 1st. So 10:00 a.m., hopefully others will come out and join us. Thank you. Next item is a Presentation of Proclamation declaring February 21, 2025 to be Arbor Day 2025 in the City of Griffin. So do we have some of our environmental council folks here with us tonight? You're stuck with me still for one more year. How are y'all today? Happy day? Wonderful. Good to see you. That's a pleasure. So we have a proclamation here declaring Arbor Day 2025. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees called Arbor Day, which was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world in recognition of the fact that trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, reducing heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and reduce stormwater runoff. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community wherever they are planted, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City Griffin was appointed, has appointed an Environmental Council to facilitate and oversee the planting of trees in the city. And whereas 2025 is the city's 33rd year to be recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, the city will be hosting a tree giveaway at the Flint River Regional Library on Saturday, February 22, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the City Griffin does hereby proclaim Friday, February 21, 2025 to be Arbor Day 2025 in the City of Griffin, and urge all the citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to support our city's urban forestry programs, and to plant trees to promote the well-being of present and future generation. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City Griffin to be affixed on this 11th day of February in the year of our Lord 2025. Signed Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, and Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager. So if we can all come up and get a picture with our team. And then you can say, wonderful, that tree. Good luck.
My turn.
Your turn.
One, two, three.
Any of us like to say anything? I know you are. You're good. All right. An Environmental Council meets the second Thursday at 5:30 in this room. Does anybody want to come join us and talk about trees? Thank you all. All right, moving to item three is Presentation of Proclamation declaring February to be Black History Month. And at this time, my friend Rita Johnson. So a short story, back in 2012, Stuart Uglutree introduced me to this young lady. We were a lot younger back then. And it said she was going to run for county commissioner, and so I was impressed then as I am now. So today, we get to celebrate you and what you've done for our community. City of Griffin, Georgia, Board of Commissioners, does hereby proclaim, recognize and celebrate Black History Month, February 2025, whereas we join the millions of Americans across the nation to convey our great appreciation for the remarkable accomplishments and lasting impact of our country's great African-American leaders and citizens, made evident loyalty locally by admirable servants such as Rita C. Johnson. Rita Celeste Johnson is a native of Bardstone, Kentucky, and a 1987 graduate of Barnstone High School. While attending high school, Rita was a renowned basketball player. She was inducted into the High School Athletic Hall of Fame in 2005. Prior to that, she earned four-year athletic scholarship to play basketball at Beller Mountain University in Louisville, Kentucky. Rita received a Bachelor's of Arts degree in communication in 1992. Rita started her career with State Farm in 1992 after college. She relocated to Bowling Green, Kentucky, and served as a senior claims adjuster handling both property damage and bodily injury claims. From there, Rita was taken, has taken various positions, including relocating to Miami, Florida, to become an active member of the National Catastrophic Team, where she served for four years before relocating to Griffin, Georgia, to become a State Farm agent. Witnessing storm destruction and devastation motivated her to become an insurance agent. She's been a State Farm agent in Griffin for over 20 years and is happy to call Griffin home. Rita takes pride in being a community leader and serving her community. She is passionate about protecting customers by providing them with adequate insurance coverage in all lines of insurance, including auto, home, business, and life. Ms. Johnson is on the ABW Executive Board, Griffin Spaulding Chamber Commerce Executive Board, the Regional Well Star Executive Board. She is a member of St. John Lutheran Church in Griffin, Georgia. She was elected as a Spaulding County Commissioner representing District 3 for 12 years. Rita has a passion for excellence, sustainability, customer service, community service, innovation, exceeding expectations, and public service. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the seal of the City Griffin to be affixed on this 11th day of February in the year of our Lord 2025. Signed Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, and Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager. So we'd like to present this to you. And if you'd like to say a couple of words, and then we'll get a picture as a team.
Just a few words here. I'm about to read all this, but say thanks here. First of all, I can't thank you all enough. I want to sincerely thank Mayor Doug Holberg, you City, Griffin City Commissioners, and the staff. I am truly honored to be recognized, particularly during this Black History Month, a time to recognize the accomplishments of Black Americans and our contributions to American society and culture. There are many people to thank that have come before me and that have helped me become the person I am today, so many names that I cannot respectfully name, all of them. Some of them that are still with us, and some of them have passed on, but all have played a significant and essential role in my life. I will always be forever grateful to all of them. I want to take a minute also to say goodbye to you all as a Spaulding County Commissioner, and I'd like to kind of start with my constituents of District 3, who overwhelmingly elected me as their county commissioner for the past 12 years. Their trust and confidence in me have allowed me to make prudent decisions based on thorough sound judgment. Their trust and support have also allowed me to sustain the highest level of commitment and dedication. So to the citizens of District 3, once again, I say thank you. I have been fortunate to work alongside an incredibly talented team. This includes every Spaulding County Commissioner, department executives, elected officials, county employees, both county managers, county staff for over the past 12 years. It has been tremendously rewarding. More importantly, I'm proud of the many accomplishments we achieved together as a team, and included many late nights of strategies and creative thinking as a way of making the right choice for the betterment of our beloved county. It was all worth it. And last but not least, I sincerely want to thank you all. A special thanks to our mayor, Doug Holberg, all the City of Commissioners, Commissioner Roddy McCord, Cynthia Reed Ward, Truman Tinsley, Holly Murray, Rose Curtis, Charles Wright, and City Manager Jessica O'Connor. It has been my privilege and honor to collaborate with you over the past 12 years. Your dedication, passion, and allegiance to our wonderful city does not go unnoticed, whether it be our vigorous loss negotiation or our partnership with UGA Archway, or simply working side by side at various local community events. We have always found a way to put community first as a way of showing unity and respect for one another. I am sincerely proud to call each of you my friend, and although I may no longer share the same government space with you, just know I truly look forward to witnessing more of your exceptional and superb leadership as you have continually slaved given throughout our community. Thank you very much.
Finance Director Deborah Manning-Gilbert will address. Welcome, Ms. Deborah. Happy day.
Good evening. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to talk about December financial statements, which is 50% into our fiscal year. Our general fund has collected $16.3 million in operating revenues, which is 64.8% of their budget. They have $18.9 million in operating expenses, or 46.4% of their budget. Our enterprise funds have collected $59.1 million in revenue, which is 53.2% of their budget. They have operating expenses of $43.4 million, which is 41.8% of their budget. Water and wastewater has $16.1 million in operating revenue, which is 53.5% of their budget, and $9.3 million in operating expenses, which is 34.3% of their budget. Electric has $35.1 million in revenue, which is 53.6% of their budget. They have $27.3 million in operating expenses, or 45.8% of their budget. Solid waste has $5.3 million in revenue, which is 50.2% of their budget, and they have $4.4 million in operating expenses, which is 14.2%, 40.2% of their budget. Year-to-date, sales tax collected in lost is $2,810,370, or 51.1% of our projections, and in TSP lost is $2,390,764, or 64.1% of our projections.
Excellent. Are there any questions, the board members? Good job. Great job for the first six months of the year.
Thank you.
Moving into citizens' comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floors to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to the concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. Subject to the citizen comment policy adopted on February 13, 2024, and posted for public view, all speakers shall be limited to three minutes, which will be strictly followed and enforced. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side that'd like to come before the Anybody on my right side like to come before the board? Okay. Moving into consent agenda, we have items five through nine. Do we have a motion to take the consent agenda as a whole?
So moved.
Motion for Commissioner Tinsley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. Moving into item, into the regular agenda, item 10 is Consider a New Georgia Municipal Association Lease Supplement under the current master lease agreement with GMA in the amount of $642,143.85 for the acquisition of a Seton fire apparatus. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Wright with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. Item 11 is Consider a Task Order Form to the Master Service Agreement between the City Griffin and Paragon Consulting Group in the amount of $43,552 for pavement condition evaluation services and assessment for all streets located in the city limits of the City of Griffin. Do we have a motion to approve the task order?
Motion.
Commissioner Wright with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCord. All in favor, please raise your hand, signal yes. Five, zero. Item 12 is Consider a Task Order for the Master Service Agreement between the City Griffin and Paragon Consulting Group in the amount of $7,550 for subsurface exploration of a geotechnical evaluation for the Kincaid and Hamilton intersection realignment project. We have a motion to approve the task order.
Motion.
Second. Commissioner Wright with a motion, second by McCord. All in favor of the task order, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. Item 13 is Consider a Purchase of a 2024 Altech AT41-M Bucket Truck for the Electric Department in the amount of $189,563 from Altech Industries, source well contract, and amend the budget accordingly. Do we have a motion to approve the purchase?
Motion.
Motion, Commissioner Wright.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor of the purchase, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. Item 14 is Consider Revisions to the Main Street Program Board Bylaws and Procedures. And just a quick summary on that is the Main Street Board proposes changes to its bylaws and procedures to reflect change in meeting location, clarify the at-large member must reside in Spaulding County, and add the wording or designate to the city manager ex officio position. The Main Street Program Board approve the changes at its meeting on January 29, 25. Do we have a motion to approve the revisions?
Motion.
Commissioner Wright with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Tinsley with a second. All in favor of the revisions, please signal by raising your hand. And while we're there, just wanted to give a shout out to Heather Robinson and the Main Street Board. They passed their reaccreditation this past week in their three-year accreditation cycle, so good job and congratulations. Item 15 is Consider a Recipient, Subrecipient Hazard Mitigation Assistant Agreement for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Award in the amount of $88,100 for four mobile message boards authorized the city manager execute the agreement as a subrecipient representative and amend the budget accordingly. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. Item 16 is Consider Recipient, Subrecipient Hazard Mitigation Assistant Agreement for a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program awarded in the amount of $365,242.61 for six fixed generators authorized the city manager execute the agreement as a subrecipient representative and amend the budget accordingly.
So moved.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. Item 17 is our executive session, which will hold on that. So turn it over to the city manager for her report.
Thank you. I would just like to point out that there were several things on your agenda tonight that we discussed in Goals workshops in January, so our staff moved along rather quickly with some grants that we were able to leverage, also with the pavement assessment that Ms. Eller is going to conduct. I think Chief Hamilton actually had a fire truck in his 2022 goals, 23 goals, and we're finally going to get that. So we're very excited to see some progress being made. For you all, also, the actuarial study that we discussed during your Goals workshop is underway. I will let you know once I have that completed so we can put those items on the agenda. Also, we have to talk about fireworks. We need to know if we want to do that again this year. The cost is $33,281.72. We normally split that in half with the county. I have not heard whether or not they want to do that this year. I know last year it was mentioned to try and get it from somewhere else, both of us, but our quote expires on Friday, and we need to know what we want to do.
Is money available through Griffin Spaulding Business Tourism Association?
I do not believe so. I sat in on their training last year, and fireworks was expressly excluded from that kind of money. But I'm being told that we will check on that again.
So our portion is approximately 17.5? Is that math right?
It's a little less than 17.
Yeah, about 17. County's always been receptive, but we just haven't heard from them this year.
I've talked with Dr. Leder, but I don't have a response.
So considering how much money we get from local option sales tax and all of other revenue, I'm in favor of supporting it.
Okay.
Be nice.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You have an opinion, Mr. Ford?
I gotta wait to see what Ms. Curtis is gonna say. Whatever. I'm just kidding. Fireworks, man.
Okay.
Even though I'm scared of them, but.
You should be.
I know we mentioned about having a SPOST meeting with the county and joint meeting, but I'm not sure that we ever reached a consensus because of the break being next week. Do y'all want me to go ahead and try and look at other dates, since we weren't 100% sure?
Other dates would be good.
Okay. All right.
So next Friday is the 21st?
The 21st. So we had not confirmed that. We can go ahead and look at something else. I know Ms. Ward potentially had a conflict, as did Ms. Murray.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
I wanted to let you know that we are a Tree City again. I think this is year 33. So lots of years that we have been a Tree City, we're very excited to have that again. A huge congratulations to Bain. He was nominated for the annual strongest link and could have won that just as well. He has done tremendous work at our golf course and is currently working on irrigation hole five, I think. So continues to work, and like Marissa said, is one of the hardest workers I've ever gotten to know. You also had your annual financial report at your chair, so that is yours to look through. That is your copy. We can go over it together if you'd like, but please take a chance to do that. We are still compiling some of the other redevelopment plans that were asked for in your workshop, and we'll get all of those together to get to you as soon as we can. And then last but certainly not least, it'll be very hard not to say Commissioner Johnson, but Ms. Johnson will be certainly missed in her role at the county, but I know she'll stay around and help us when we need her. So very glad to be able to represent, recognize her tonight as well. And that's it for me.
Mr. Whalen?
No comment.
Ms. Rose Curtis?
No comment.
Commissioner Tinsley?
Nothing, Ed.
Commissioner McCord?
Just wanted to thank the City of Griffin for Black History Month.
Commissioner Wright?
Nothing.
Perfect. Speaking of Black History, Black Heritage Festival was this weekend, was a guest there, and I think a couple of us were also there, but an unbelievable tribute to the talent at Griffin and Spaulding High School, our community choral group, as well as Albany State and Port Valley State University choirs came in. It brought back memories when I was in choir back in the day and touring the world at one point in time, but it was most exceptional and wanted to encourage everybody to join that wonderful. They also gave $6,000 to Spaulding High School Choir and $6,000 to Griffin High School Choir. Great testimony of their hard work for that community. Bain wanted to just say a shout out. You know, I played at another club this weekend, and the greens are nowhere as amazing as what's at Griffin City Park. I was out there yesterday registering for the upcoming tournament, and the whole course was full, so it's exciting to see what's accomplished going on out there. Environmental Council is working towards several events coming up this year, some different cleanups and things, so appreciate them and their support of Tree Cities. There'll be tree giveaways coming up very soon. And then Rita Johnson has been a friend of this board and this community for the last 12-plus years that she's been here, and we're honored to celebrate her accomplishments and hope her the very best in her retirement. So with that being said, do we have a motion to go Consider Executive Session pursuant to OCGA 501421 for the purpose of consulting and meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending and potential litigation, settlement claims, administrative proceedings, and other or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please join us. That's five, zero. Okay. There's only one thing. Thank you, Mr. Larry. We appreciate you keeping our community in the know.
Any expectations?
I think just basically everything.
Okay, sir.
Okay, sir. We're not going to buy like, we're not going to like annex Spalding County.
Okay. Anything like that, crazy.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn our regular meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Wright, second by Ms. Curtis. All in favor, say, raise your hand. Good night, folks. Y'all be safe.